Good evening and welcome to the October 4th Board of Trustees Meeting in the Village of Tuckahoe. Can everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Present.
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 Present. Present, and our first order of business will be two appointments in the Tuckahoe Police Department. So I'm asking for a motion authorizing the appointment of Christopher Santiago to Police Detective Sergeant effective today, October 4th.
So moved.
Second.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. And may I also have a motion authorizing the appointment of Christopher Harris to Police Sergeant effective today, October 4th?
So moved.
Second.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor. In favor, and can I ask Christopher Santiago to come forward first for the swearing in? Um, I can hold it, thank you. So I just ask that you hold the Bible. You place your left hand on the Bible and you repeat after me. I, Christopher Santiago.
I, Christopher Santiago.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Police Detective Sergeant.
I will faithfully discharge the duty of Police Detective Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Christopher. May I have Christopher Harris up with family member who will hold up the Bible for you? Sure, she can come up. The whole, both of them can come up. Oh, the pen. So please repeat after me, right hand. I, Christopher Harris.
I, Christopher Harris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Police Sergeant.
That I will faithfully discharge the duty of Police Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Congratulations. May I ask Chief Costanzo to come up with some words?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board, members of the public. Tonight is really a great night for the Tuckahoe Police Department. I have the great privilege of being a part of a promotion of two great individuals, people who've worked very hard over the course of their career to earn their distinction tonight. So it's very pleasing for me to be a part of this process. I will first talk about Sergeant, Detective Sergeant Christopher Santiago. Chris was appointed as a police officer in 2008 at the Tuckahoe Police Department. He was promoted to Sergeant in 2016. He is the Emergency Response Unit Team Leader for the Village of Tuckahoe. He's our Defensive Tactics Instructor, our Active Shooter Instructor. He's a member of the Motorcycle Unit, and he's a youth officer. Chris, from the moment he became a police officer, has distinguished himself, being part of all of the units that we were able to offer, and then coming to a leadership position as Sergeant. As a Sergeant, he earned a respect of all the people that have worked for him, as well as his peer sergeants and his lieutenants and me as Chief of Police. Chris is going to be a great addition to the Detective Division. It's a very important position in our Police Department. He leads all the investigations. He's in charge of all record management, as well as liaison to the District Attorney's Office, amongst many other things that he's responsible for. It's a crucial part of our Police Department. Chris has always exhibited great leadership skills, and he's going to be a perfect fit for that position. So I welcome him to that position, and I'm very, very pleased to make this appointment tonight. I just want to acknowledge that he's joined here tonight by his wife Christina, who held the Bible and pinned his shield, as well as his little daughter Adriana. So congratulations to them and his entire family as well. And Chris actually announced a couple of good things this week. Of course, this is a big moment in his life, but it probably pales to the fact that he's going to be a dad again in March. So congratulations. Christopher Harris was appointed to the Tuckahoe Police Department in 2016. He first joined law enforcement as a member of the Mount Vernon Police Department in 2013. Prior to that, he served with the New York City Child Protective Services. He has a tremendous resume. He has a background in education, a master's degree actually in education, a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He's a member of our Emergency Response Team. He's a hostage negotiator. He's a member of the Traffic Enforcement Unit. And Chris, although he's only been with us for five years again, he has moved up quickly for a small job like ours to be appointed and promoted to Sergeant. In five years is quite an accomplishment, and it's because he's earned, again, the respect of everyone who he has worked with. He has great leadership skills. He's going to be a good, great patrol sergeant, great leader in this department, and both of these members are going to be future, the future of this department, and I'm really pleased to be a part of that process with him as well. I just want to share a very quick story about Chris. And I think it exhibits all of his, all of his attributes. Several years ago, when he was not with us very long, there was a very unhappy person at our front desk, and he was quite belligerent and loud, and I tried to intervene and use some of my conflict resolution skills, but they weren't working very well. And as hard as I tried, I started to lose my patience with this gentleman. And Chris tapped me on the shoulder and said, "Chief, don't worry about it. I have this," and took over and calmed the, I got out of the person's eyesight, but I was close enough to hear the conversation, and he calmed this person down, and the person left as happy as he could be. And to me, that proved a lot of things. One, of course, his ability to de-escalate and his ability to communicate, but it also showed me his leadership skills right then and there, that he was, he had the wherewithal to tap out the Chief of Police and intervene. And again, he proved a lot to me that day, and he continues to show me all of the great things that he brings to the table. So congratulations to these two gentlemen.
Is there anybody on the board who would like to say a few brief remarks? We do have several public hearings.
I would just like to congratulate Detective Sergeant Chris Santiago and Sergeant Christopher Harris. We had the pleasure of reading you guys' resumes and after seeing and hearing all the things you have done in this department, your promotion is a job well done. You deserve it. Thank you.
Anyone else? I would just quickly like to echo Trustee Taylor's sentiments. We interviewed several people for the positions, and I, it was a difficult decision for us because everyone was really top-notch. So congratulations to you two. You know, our department is already a great department, and you're just adding to that. So thank you very much for your service. Okay, so I think we'll take a quick recess in case the families want to, sorry, say that again?
Can the two appointees say a few?
Oh, absolutely. Sorry, I didn't mean to exclude you.
I would first like to thank Chief Costanzo, Mayor Andino, and the Village Board of Trustees for this opportunity. I would also like to thank my family for their support. As I start a new chapter in my career, I look forward to the challenges that it will bring. It's an honor to receive this promotion, and I will continue to serve the residents of Tuckahoe with professionalism and respect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just like to say it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you to the board. Thank you to Chief Costanzo. Thank you to everyone that came out tonight. It's lovely to see my family. It's been a very quick five years, and it's been a pleasure working in the community and meeting everyone, and it's going to continue to be a pleasure to work with everyone for the next number of years to come. Thank you much. Have a good night.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I neglected to introduce Chris's family who's here as well, so I'd like to just acknowledge Ayesha, Morgan, and Lincoln, as well as the rest of the family.
Congratulations to the family. So we'll take a brief recess just to let the family join with their loved ones, to go and celebrate, I'm sure. I don't know that you want to stay here for the public hearings. You are welcome to, but from the looks of it, they don't want to. So we'll take a quick recess.
Camille.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good night.
I have my pink purse.
Wade, did you turn me off? The seats in the front.
There are some seats in the front for those who are sitting in the back now that the family has gone. If you, if you'd like to, you can sit there. So we'll get back on track. So we have our public hearing number one today is to consider a proposed local law to repeal the workforce housing, the Village of Tuckahoe zoning code. May I have a motion to open, actually, is this public hearing already open? I think it's already open. So we are still hearing comments on the consideration of this proposed local law repeal. Does anybody here who would like to speak on this local law? You may do so now. If there is no one else that would like to speak to this, I'm going to ask for a motion to close this public hearing as we're going to vote on it later on.
So moved. Second.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. And our second public hearing, which is always, already open, is for a public hearing to consider establishing a model landmark preservation local law. If there is anyone here that would like to speak to this law, you may do so now. So I believe we're keeping this local law open until we have finalized the, the law in full. So may I have a motion, well, I don't need a motion for that. May I have a motion to, to consider a public hearing to consider the proposed local law, actually, it's already open, opting out of licensing and establishing retail cannabis dispensaries and/or onsite cannabis consumption establishment within the Village of Tuckahoe? So if anyone would like to speak on this proposed local law to opt out, you may do so now. Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ken Folia, 28 Bronx Street. Going to do a little reading here, but not much, so just be a little patient. But as a lot of us already know, we need our glasses to do that. Okay. Last meeting we were here, we discussed this situation, and the town meeting, there had been no studies done. So basically, I just wanted to do a little research because I'm not sure how the town would vote on something like this. I believe it's all up to the mayor and the board members. And I'd like to know, possibly, could you tell us where you stand at this point? Is that a possibility or is it a secret?
It's not a secret. I don't want to, I don't like to give my opinion prematurely because I want to hear fully from the public what the residents like, would like, and would not like, and so that's where I stand. I like to hear all of the facts and hear opinions before I make those decisions.
I respect that. The bottom line to that would be if somebody's running for office, we want to know what they want to do, so we can maybe know how.
So, okay, so just, just so you know, I try to make decisions based on three things. Our data and, you know, actual information based on data, what the residents like, and how it's going to impact the village. So those are all the things that I take into consideration in making the decision. And your, your input does impact that.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate where you all stand on this. So basically, there is no data, so you can't use that portion to make a decision on it. The only thing we can go on is possibly looking to see what other communities have done and how it affects these communities. So furthermore, with the law, the way I understand it, if we don't opt out, we're locked in. Is that correct?
If you opt in, you're locked in.
Okay, no, no. If I don't, if we don't opt out by December 31st this year, we're locked in.
Right, right. You have, we have until December 31st. That's correct.
So basically, with no data and not understanding what it's doing, I did a little research on a couple of the communities in the area, not necessarily close by, but to what we can go on. Basically, Beacon, New York, I'm not sure if you're familiar with.
I am.
What they're doing up there. Basically, the law hasn't been implemented yet, but a local head shop or something was passing out joints to the community, which my understanding is totally legal. So they're within their rights to do that, to promote their business or upcoming business. So basically, I wouldn't want to see that happen in town here. Second of all, basically, Bronxville and Eastchester have opted out, and I'm sure they have their reasons. I did speak to several people on the boards there and so forth. There was no particular reason, they just didn't want to move forward with it. Thirdly, what I think we should be doing is looking at what kind of effects would come with this. So I would hope you take into consideration maybe holding off on if you were to opt in for it until we see what happens in other communities, because that could give us an insight of whether or not we want to participate. So if we opt out by December 31st and then later on find out that this could work for the community, maybe additional tax resources, which my understanding won't amount to too much because we're such a small community, but at that point, we would better know and understand, and we could always opt in and get the benefits at a later date, because it could put an undue influence, not influence, but stress on the Police Department. It could bring additional challenges to the neighborhood. So my attitude is I hope you would opt out to it and give us the opportunity to opt in at a later date.
I appreciate your feedback.
That's it. I have a lot more emails and websites that can be shared with the community if they want to know what's going on. But lastly, and I forgot to mention, there is a five-person committee that is being formed or was just appointed by the Governor of New York, and they're still deciding on the legislation.
That's correct.
So the laws, you know, there are no laws.
That's correct.
Yet, so how can we make a decision on what we want to do? So I just hope you make the right decision.
We appreciate your feedback and your, your research and all of that. It really is appreciated.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the, the Governor has appointed, it's the Office of Cannabis Management that you're referring to. Yeah. They were actually formed, I think, yesterday. Gary?
They're appointed, they're, they're appointed first.
Tomorrow. Right.
That's correct.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to weigh in? No problem.
No problem.
My name's Paul Difucci. I live at 31 Wendsl Circle. I've been here for almost 15 full years next week. So me and my family, I have two young children, and my wife enjoy the community. We love the diversity. We love this, the, the culture of the community, the safeness of the community, and the intimacy of a small community in a very dense area. I'm not going to be as detailed as the gentleman before me. I think he covered a lot of stuff that is spot-on, and if he's not in law, I encourage him to get in law, and I'll use him as my lawyer. But I'm against this. Just anecdotal in past experiences, what this stuff could lead to. The law's not regulated yet. It's not even written. There's concern. So what's the rush? Opt out, make the right decision, and then move on. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to weigh in? Is there anyone on Zoom? I'm sorry, gentlemen.
My name is Dr. Nicholas Payne. I'm also a professor of medicine at New York University. Also director, I'm also an addiction specialist. I think this is a big mistake. This, this drug is a bad drug from the medical standpoint, and we're going to learn the hard way. I can tell you that I went up to Albany two years ago and talked against this drug. This is a bad drug. It has long, it's not like alcohol. Alcohol has a very simple way of breaking down the carbon dioxide and water. Those who promoted this drug saying it's a safe recreational drug, it's not. It has long half-life. It's, it has a, it's, it's lipotrophic, so it accumulates in the fat in the body. So you smoke a joint, you sneak out 50% of that joint in your system one week later. This accumulates in the fat in the body. We're seeing in the literature now people developing schizophrenia. We have big problems with this drug. This is an experiment that's really bad. I, I've been here almost five years. I came to Tuckahoe because I had 40 years in Bronxville, and I found that Tuckahoe was the best village. I think it's a mistake to make this drug, to get interest. The gentleman before me, I think, has the right idea. You have to see what's going to happen. I can tell you what's happened to doctors that I know from Colorado. We have big problems with the drug on the highway. You lose your ability to judge distance, and this drug stays around a long time in the, in the body. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to weigh in? If there's anyone on Zoom, no one on Zoom, is there anyone on the board that would like to weigh in?
We had a few questions last time. Okay. Yeah. So we had a couple of questions last time, and so we said we would come back with some answers. We had a young woman who asked about whether or not these would be cash-only businesses because of the, the way marijuana has been legalized at the state level but not at the federal level, and so there is a question about whether or not credit cards can be used, and so the concern was about would these be cash businesses coming in? Just to answer her question, if hopefully she's listening, that currently the medical establishments, the medical dispensaries are able to process payments through some kind of app that's similar to Venmo or a cash app, and so it is not completely a cash business, just to answer her question. And then I, you know, to the, some of the residents' points, I, I looked at about eight meta-studies that looked at over, over 300 different studies on cannabis and the impact on communities. And ultimately, I think that the, the data is very mixed, and that's something that we need to, to come to terms with, right? So my biggest takeaway from the data is that, one, it's highly politicized and that people cherry pick data to feed a narrative that they would like to see, to see exploited. I will not contribute to that in one way or the other. These are the takeaways that I have gotten from all the, all the literature that I read. Obviously cannabis-related arrests have fallen since legalization in different states. Currently, 18 states have legalized, and Washington DC. Most of the states have, have experienced some increase in drivers driving under the influence, to the doctor's point. The expected revenue from the marijuana industry and marijuana tourism has not been as high as expected, so it's not the cash windfall that, that states have hoped that it would be. There is a tax revenue increase, however, and that varies along states. Youth and adolescent youth has remained stable in, in both recreational and non-recreational states, but there is some evidence that communities with opt-in policies saw increase in usage for youth who had already been using marijuana, but not for youth who had not previously used it. So the data is very mixed, and I think that's an important point, and you will have people come and, and point to different data, and so we're going to take all of that into consideration.
Thank you, Trustee Cronin. Anyone else on the board would like to weigh in? Okay. And I just want to also thank several people sent emails weighing in on their opinion on this, and I want to say thank you to the residents who have given their opinions and have weighed in on this because it's important for us to know what the community wants. It's really nice to see so many people come out in response to this, and it would be even better if you continue to come out to support the community and to give your input and your feedback. I just also want to speak to the fact that this is not something that the board is discussing because we want to open a dispensary, which is a narrative that is also out there. I've gotten emails from people saying, you know, "You want to open up a dispensary? I don't agree with this." This is in response to a law that was passed in March of 2021 this year by the Governor, the Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act, MRTA, if you haven't heard about it, which was enacted for the purpose of creating a regulated and taxed cannabis industry in New York. So that gives each municipality the right to opt in or opt out, and so that's why we're holding these public hearings, to hear from the community. I know people have stated that Bronxville and Eastchester have already opted out. We have chosen to listen to as many residents as possible before making this decision, so that's why we have, we kept the public hearing open. So I just want to make that clear. So at this point, we will be closing the public hearing at next month's meeting, and at that point, we will be voting on this. So if there are any additional residents who would like to weigh in on this during this public hearing time, you'll have until next month, at which point we will close the public hearing and vote on it. Okay? Okay, so I will move on to the adoption of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 13th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor?
Trustee Howard.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. In favor. And now we will have the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items. If there's anyone that would like to address the board on any agenda items, you may do so now.
Claire Gorman, Twenty-Four Bronx Street. I just want to commend you for taking on the landmark preservation because, I mean, I think about the smokestack all the time, and if we had had it, we probably wouldn't have lost it. And even though in the nineties, the boards did their due diligence, they thought they did, by making sure that the Riverview had to maintain that, but they didn't. And then we're stuck with it gone. But I will also say that the plaque, I don't know if you've seen it, it's beautiful. And that's thanks to Tocco Beautification, which I know Sue is here, and Tocco historical. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the board on any agenda items? No one? Anyone on Zoom? Okay. All right, so we'll move on to our resolutions. The first resolution, I need a motion authorizing the proposed local law to repeal the workforce housing zoning code. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. In favor. The second resolution, authorizing the use of the Main Street tennis courts by E-CAP between three-thirty and five-thirty PM on nine-twenty-one, nine-twenty-eight, which have already happened, ten-five, ten-twelve, between nine and ten-thirty AM on Saturdays from October second through November sixth. And this is a tennis clinic that E-CAP is holding for students and residents in the village. May I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. In favor. And may I have a motion authorizing the closure of Warren Avenue for a Halloween parade and party on October thirty-first, beginning at three-thirty? May I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. And may I have a motion authorizing the mayor to execute an IMA with the town of Eastchester and the village of Bronxville relating to shared motor vehicles, equipment, and tools?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor, always great to share. And I'd also like a motion authorizing the mayor to execute an IMA with the county of Westchester for the use of the county's Department of Public Safety's firing range facility.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. And I'd like a motion authorizing the village on an emergency basis to have roads in the village resurfaced prior to the beginning of winter.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. May I have a motion authorizing the escalation of parking tickets to double after fourteen days of issuance, and triple after twenty-eight days, and quadruple after forty-five days? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. So we recommend and urge you to pay your tickets on time if you get some. We also need a motion authorizing the village court to apply for a justice court assistance program grant in, for up to thirty thousand dollars for the cycle twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two.
So moved. Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. And may I have a motion authorizing the polling location for all election districts to be held at the Tocco Community Center on March fifteenth, 2022, from six AM to nine PM?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
May I have a motion waiving the building department? I'm sorry, in favor. Moving too fast here. May I have a motion authorizing the waiving of building department fees for work to be completed by the MTA at Village Hall related to an antenna replacement project?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. And may I have a motion authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, and two-hundred, four-hundred-and-thirty thousand and two-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. And that'll take us to department reports. So Chief, do you have anything in addition to the great night you've already had?
Thank you. I just want to piggyback on one of the resolutions tonight. The tower that MTA police is putting on top of our roof is coupled with that today we were delivered twenty-three, twenty-three brand-new portable radios on loan from the MTA police until we could get our order in. This partnership with the MTA is allowing us to go to a digital radio system to replace a very aged-out analog system that we're currently using, and which has many gaps and creates officer safety issues. This partnership is literally saving the village hundreds of thousands of dollars by partnering for them to put the antenna on our roof and sharing the radio systems and the radios themselves. So I just want to say a huge thank you to the MTA police, Chief McGann, who is the chief of patrol for the MTA police, Captain Valorelli, who is running the radio projects, and across Lieutenant Larry Rota from the Tocco Police Department, who is spearheading our end of the deal. It's a great partnership, and again, it not only addresses officer safety issues, it enhances safety for our public, but at the same time saves the village literally hundreds of thousands of dollars. So thank you to all involved. And finally, I just wanted to announce a couple of outreach programs that we have. We partnered with Bronxville Police just last Saturday for a barbecue at their Village Hall. It was very well-attended. I think we had about three hundred people. I know we cooked several hundred hot dogs and hamburgers. The mayor ate several. But it was a great, it was a great event. It was a lot of fun. To all the Tocco residents and Bronxville residents who came out to support the police departments, just to have a good time, we say thank you to them. We are going to have our pizza with police. We did it last year for the first year. We're going to do it again this year on October's Tuesday, October twelfth. We're moving it to the community center only because we are partnering again with Bronxville Police and now the Eastchester Police as well. So we want to make it a bigger event. We needed to have a site that has some parking and bathrooms, et cetera. So we're moving it to the community center outside, weather permitting, and that's October twelfth, Tuesday, from four-thirty to six-thirty PM. So we invite the public. We will announce it on our social media and put it on the website, et cetera. So those are my two announcements. Are there any questions from the votes?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I don't see Frank here. Right? No? Okay. Is there anything you want to report on? Okay. I'll wait till we get to you. And sure, recreation. Swadish, library director?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, trustees, and fellow residents. Want to say congratulations to Mrs. Charlotte Stappel on her retirement after thirty-seven years of service to the library and the Tocco community. Thanks Mayor Endino and Trustee Howard for attending and presenting her the Certificate of Excellence on behalf of the village. Charlotte was a fixture at our library and also played a large role in the fundraising events for the friends of the library. On behalf of the staff and myself, we all wish her a happy retirement. She's going to be missed by staff and the patrons. And on a sad note, I have to say, Maybel Callender passed away on Friday. She served on the library board as the president from nineteen sixty-nine to two thousand eight. Our thoughts and prayers are with the family. And some of the upcoming events for the library, and also starting October first, libraries back to the normal, regular hours. Monday and Wednesday, we open ten-thirty to eight-thirty, and Saturday, ten to five, and Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, ten-thirty to five-thirty. And we have an upcoming special program. It's called, the title of the book is What Is Like to Be a Bird with author David Allen Sibley. It's going to be on Tuesday, October twelfth, at seven PM for ages ten and up, and everybody can join to this program. And we have, I think, ten or twelve libraries from the system who are sponsoring this program. And we have some upcoming children's event, bilingual kids' storytime in the park with Mayor Endino on Friday, October fifteenth, at eleven AM. Pumpkin patch storytime in the park, Tuesday, October twenty-sixth, at eleven AM for ages zero to six. Outdoor kids' craft pumpkin painting, ages four to ten, Tuesday, October nineteenth, at four-thirty PM at the community center. Harry Potter Book Club, age four to six. It's going to be in person at the library on Tuesday, October twenty-sixth, at four PM. And we have children's storytime in the park on Tuesday at eleven AM, and a storytime online on the Friday for some, I think we are planning to do in the community center October twenty-second and twenty-nine. And we have some special program for adults, which is memoir writing, which is going to be tomorrow at five, October fifth, at one PM, and also we have a Tai Chi Tuesday, tomorrow at nine AM. We also have healthy meal planning, fruits and vegetables on Thursday, October fourteenth, at three PM. Then meet local author Kevin Chen and editor Earl Carr. The book is From Trump to Biden and Beyond: Reimagining U.S.-China Relation, which is going to be on Monday, October twenty-fifth, at six-thirty PM. And on Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, and two PM, we have unclaimed funds from New York State Comptroller Office. Lee Solomon will be there on a webinar to talk about how you can claim the money which people have and they don't know. And Managing Your First Year Alone: A Legal and Financial Planning Checklist for Widows and Widowers. It's going to be on Friday, October twenty-ninth, and three PM. And we have an ongoing program, virtual meditation, which is every Wednesday at twelve, and online gentle chair yoga with Alan Cohen, which is every Thursday at five-thirty PM. And we have a specialty in craft program, which is going to be on Monday, October eighteen, and four PM. And we also have yoga for the children's pre-K, ages two, two-and-a-half to five, October thirteen, at eleven AM, and ages six to ten, October thirteen, at four PM, and art class with Mike Teeter, Wednesday, October twentieth, at four-thirty PM. All these programs are free. Please check our website and sign up for these events. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a great library with so much, such a robust program. Thank you, Swadish. Gary, do you have anything? Our village attorney?
Nothing. I'd like to say my condolences to the Callender family. Maybel was our court clerk, I believe, for decades here. She was a mixture of all.
Wow.
A wonderful lady. My neighbor, growing up, so condolences to the Callender families.
David?
Yeah, I have a few announcements, actually, from DPW, and then one on my own. Again, this year, DPW will be wearing pink shirts for breast cancer awareness month.
Ours.
I remember Mr. Merco a couple of years ago said, everybody knows someone that's been affected by this, and it's absolutely true, and it's unfortunate, but I'm proud of the DPW guys for, again, wearing pink shirts this year. And also, Village Hall will be lit up pink for the month of October. Not to be outdone by EMS, fire department, the police department, DPW will be participating in the annual chili cook-off this year. That's at Broken Bow Brewery, Saturday, October thirtieth. It's really great. Obviously, I think a lot of people have been there. Funds from Each Pint of Beer Soul go to the Ray Pfeiffer Foundation, which assists nine-eleven first responders with certain medical needs. So I think it's a great, you'll see, probably our police are probably going to do it again this year, DPW, so it's a great event. So go out there and support them. And then get acquainted with your DPW Day once again this year. Frank and his guys are going to do a great job at the facility and Main Street Park, showing off the equipment, what the guys do, the sustainable initiatives, hot dogs, popcorn, maybe a DJ will be there this year, so a lot of good things going on. And then the last thing I don't want to talk about is paving. We passed a resolution, so paving in the next couple of weeks. We're finalizing the paving list tomorrow, meeting with Con Ed reps. One thing we don't want to do is pave a road and then have Con Ed come and rip it up a year later. So what we're trying to do is partner with them.
That never happens.
Yeah. So the last walk-through will be tomorrow, and then we'll get something up on the website. But more importantly, roads like Marble Dale, Columbus, Yonkers Avenue, major thoroughfares will be paved this year. So look forward to that in the next couple of weeks.
Thanks, David. Camille, do you have anything? Okay, that'll take us to, well, we have a few, let's see here, DPW Day, you've already talked about. Winterfest. Winterfest is on Saturday, December fourth, from twelve to eight at Depot Square. So mark your calendars for that. That takes us to Board of Trustee member reports. Trustee Lang, will you please report out?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So first, we have the Tocco History Committee report. The Tocco History Committee met virtually over the past year and is now meeting in person on Wednesdays from nine-thirty to twelve-thirty as of September third. Here's a recap. We have almost two hundred binders of local history with a hundred and fifteen scanned, and in the future, these scans will be available to the public. The dismantling of the historic smokestack at Riverview in November of two thousand twenty was documented in photos and video. We assisted in the design of the monument and plaque on the corner of Main Street and Lake Avenue commemorating the history of the stone mill complex where Riverview now stands. The DPW used some of the smokestack brick in the design of the monument. The project was funded by the Tocco Beautification and by the Burrows Welcome, who are funding benches in honor of Nobel laurentis and borough scientists, Doctors Gertrude Elian and George Hitchens. They are, Tocco History Committee is very proud of their Facebook page. It has eight hundred and twenty-six likes with eight hundred and eighty-one people who follow. During the months of August and September, they posted sixteen new posts, which reached some sixteen thousand people with shares. Nick Zanzano gave part one of his presentation on Tocco history, Tocco before and after, at the Tocco Library in August. Part two is scheduled for November. Richard Foliano conducted a trolley tour and brought new teachers from the Tocco schools to visit our Mini Marble Museum on August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. They were pleased to learn about the village and its great history. The committee provided supporting documentation for the preservation of the wardhouse. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. The committee partnered in the geocaching project with Tocco Library. And in June, we joined in honoring the great contributions of Phil and Alice White to the history of our village, and their legacy continues to grow in all of our endeavors. So that would be Tocco's history report. And now I have beautification. Beautification continues their hard work recently planting cabbages and mums along Fisher and at the community center. Beautification would like to encourage businesses as well as residents to donate for this year's wreath and bows hung throughout our village. Just like everything else, these expenses also went up, so donations are greatly appreciated and will be recognized. Donations can be sent to PO Box one forty-two, Tocco, New York, one oh seven oh seven, and all donations are tax deductible. You know, it's these donations and the hard work of beautification committee that keep our village looking so good. So, you know, let's keep the ball rolling and do what we can in supporting them. Thank you to beautification. And just a couple of, this is a busy, busy month with different events, so. Senior Bingo's back, I'm sure. Trustee Cronin mentioned that. I just got a- I, I, I just got to say this. You know, when you're waiting on, like, B twelve and it's the last number, they probably need to start serving alcohol, because I was like a nervous wreck. It's kind of crazy, that's just me. But, you know, so, again, Bingo is back in person. The P B A, I want to make mention of a wonderful dart tournament that, the P B A, was their first annual dart tournament fundraiser. Special thanks to Tucked Away for hosting. It was a wonderful event and nice job by the P B A, and they're going to be doing good stuff with that money, so thank you to them. Tucko Cares Day, special thanks to D P W and Trustee Cronin. We had a wonder, we had wonderful weather, a boatload of volunteers, so we got to keep that event going, and I got my first yoga lesson, so that was wonderful. Thank you, Trustee Cronin.
You're welcome.
Tucko Police Department and the Bronxville Police Department held a barbecue in front of the Bronxville Village Hall. It was nice to see both chiefs cooking as well. And, I'm sorry, it was nice to see both chiefs cooking as well as Officer Foodie, our favorite, Officer Anthony Solano. One of our favorites, pardon me, we love the entire department, but he is Officer Foodie, just so anybody knows. East Chester's Five K was also held last weekend. It was nice to see so many people enjoying the outdoors, so special thanks to the Five K Committee for another wonderful event. The T Y A held a fundraiser last weekend at the Broken Bow Brewery. I just wanted to say cheers to the staff for their wonderful hospitality. The Broken Bow has really become, you know, one of Tucko's favorite places to visit, and we appreciate all of their support, so thank you very much to the folks at Broken Bow. And today, I attended East Chester's Italian-American and East Chester's Irish-American Annual Golf Outing. It was a great day, not so much weather, but I want to thank both committees for their hard work. And lastly, I'd like to encourage everyone to vote on November second. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Howell?
Thank you. So as Trustee Lang said, it's been a very busy month. I would also like to thank Kara Cronin and D P W for the great Tucko Cares Day. I was assigned part of Main Street, and I can tell you, I was talking to a lot of the business owners, they were really, really appreciative of that effort. Also, was able to attend the Bronxville and Tucko Police Department's wonderful community barbecue, and we have to tell Anthony that that was one of the best hamburgers I ever had, and I had to keep it away from the mayor. Also wanted to give a shout out to Shiloh Baptist Church, who this past weekend named their first female deacons to the church and their first female pastor in a hundred and eight years. So congratulations to all of them, but special shout out to Marveen Downs Graves from Tucko. Zoning Board Meeting will be October thirteenth at seven thirty P M. The working meeting prior to that, there's some returns that we've been talking about now for months and a few new residential variance applications. The Planning Board Meeting will be held October nineteenth at seven thirty. Working meeting will be October fifth, again, with, there's a lot of returning applications, one new one for sixty-two Main Street, a site plan for a nail salon. And we are still actively working on the restaurant site at Marble Dale and will continue to do so until we are done. I wanted to take a moment to thank, actually, John Pallandino. He has served on our zoning board for over a decade, and for those who have worked with him, you know, I, I've gotten a lot of feedback and seen him in action. He is really a person who understands the criteria used to make assessments of the zoning board and applies it consistently, so we wanted to thank him for his dedication and his expertise and wish him a happy retirement from the zoning board. On September twenty-second, I was able to attend the annual meeting of the East Chester Historical Society, who put on a program focused on the ward house and its importance in the American Revolutionary War. This program was written by Dick Forliano and had a little program that starred our own Jenny Steinhegen, and that was really very interesting. At the end of the presentation, the Historical Society unveiled a historical map of East Chester, which is set around early nineteen hundreds, or covers up to the early nineteen hundreds, and I have it on good authority, they're going to come and present the, the village with an official framed one, but I actually bought one, and I just wanted to show it to everybody. You can get these from the Historical Society for twenty-five dollars. It's a fundraiser for them. And half of the sites listed here are actually sites that are in Tucko, so it was especially meaningful for me for the work that I've seen our task force done and to be able to put, you know, actual law in place to protect these sites. A lot has been going on this month, too, on the, the health front. I wanted to remind everybody that we will be sponsoring a free flu vaccination clinic, sponsored by New York Presbyterian Lawrence Hospital and the Community Fund of Bronxville, East Chester, and Tucko on November third between ten and, and one P M. Flu vaccinations are available to anyone nineteen years and older. There's no appointment necessary. I also wanted to mention to people that, you know, we, it was reported in the news that last week Pfizer submitted data for vaccination on children ages five to eleven, so it's anticipated that that vaccine will be available for children by the end of the year. And we're, we're going to work, as we have done in the past, to have a local vaccination clinic here in Tucko. And then I wanted to make residents aware that the county made an announcement on September thirtieth about the Westchester County Project Alliance. This was something that was announced by George Latimer, the county executive, and it's really coming out of the Westchester County Police Reform and Reimagining Task Force. I think it's, it's probably one of the strongest things that's come out of that, that program, and especially important to us here in Tucko. We had a lot of work that we were doing, you know, with the police, with Damon Marr, our county legislator, on creating, you know, additional services for mental health and, you know, supporting the police and the efforts that they do in that work. So this program is a very large program, enhancing mental health services that we have in the county currently and introducing some new ones. There'll be a twenty-four-seven crisis hotline that is, is for use for any resident or a family member or a neighbor who's concerned about somebody, and there'll be a full implementation of the crisis response line in early two thousand twenty-two. There's also an additional training for police and E M T personnel on how to deal with, you know, mental health crises in the community. And two intervention teams are going to be created in this program as well. The one that I think is most exciting for us is the Mobile Crisis Response Team, so this will be a team of mental health professionals who work alongside the police. They're specially trained and provide assessment of needs and short-term support and linkages that are necess, to necessary services for people in the community. This is something that really, you know, the police have had to deal with without a lot of support in the community, and so it's really great to have the county recognize and give this support to the communities, and I just want to thank our county legislators and county executive for that. And finally, I would just like to let people know, I had to cancel my office hours this week due to last-minute business travel that I have to go on, so I will be here next Thursday.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Trustee Taylor.
The East Chester Community Action Partnership, as the mayor had mentioned earlier, has a free tennis clinic at the Main Street Park and is sponsored by B Tennis. It's for the student of the after-school program and also other kids in the community. The clinic started this past Saturday, October second, and will continue for the next five weeks, Saturday mornings, nine to ten thirty A M. And they currently have seven students enrolled in the clinic. E Cap, which currently has a food pantry once a month, is working with the food pantries and their donors in hopes of adding a second day of food pantry, so it'll be two in a month, and that is to help them get prepared for Thanksgiving. Anyone who has either needed to have food for Thanksgiving or has participated in volunteering for E Cap knows that every year they do an unbelievable job of having dinners for families. And when I say dinners, I mean everything you need, complete, depending on how many people that are in your family. And Denise Chen and her staff and all the volunteers do a wonderful job of making that happen for everyone. Anyone who would like to donate to the food pantry can call E Cap and speak to Director Denise Chen at nine one four three three seven 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 six eight. The Tucko Housing Authority, the Tucko Housing Authority had their board meeting on September twenty-eighth. They, like so many of the other residents in our village, are still dealing with the aftermath of Hurricane Ida. Some of the residents have asked the question, is it worth it to reach out to FEMA to try to get help with their losses due to the hurricane? I would encourage anyone who suffered loss, whether it is your home, your vehicle, whatever was damaged, to contact FEMA and see if they can help you with that endeavor. The Tucko Community Center has open gym on Tuesdays and Thursdays, one thirty to four P M. During that time, you can play basketball, foosball, soccer, enjoy sports TV. That's during the open gym hours. Anyone that wants to schedule their next birthday party or event at the community center, parties can be scheduled from four to six P M, Monday through Friday, and Saturdays, eleven A M to one P M. Call John Galuzzi at nine one four two three one zero two two nine. And last but not least, the Hometown Heroes Banner Program. The Hometown Heroes Banner Program fosters civic awareness and honors meaningful contributions made within communities through the program. The names, images, and dates of service or participants will appear on the banners displayed in the village of Tucko on the post, light post. Banners are sponsored and paid for by individuals or groups to eliminate past and present veterans, members of the armed forces, first responders, and or essential workers of Tucko, New York. An individual is eligible to be honored if they are serving or have served in any of the following branches of the United States Armed Forces, the Air Force, the Army, the Coast Guard, Marines, and the Navy. The cost of the banners are one hundred dollars. Honories and first responders, i.e. police, firefighters, EMS, also have eligibility requirements that they must meet. For more information on how to honor someone with a banner, please call nine one four two four nine nine seven seven nine, or you can email thecoddletroop2642@gmail.com. The deadline to have your application in is October tenth, and anyone presently here who wants an application can see me after the meeting. Thank you, and I would like to thank Vito Pinto, anyone who knows Vito Pinto. He is a veteran himself. He has played a huge role in this endeavor, and he, he has been cracking the whip for us to get this done, me and Trustee Cronin. And it's a great thing to do to honor the heroes, and I'm sure the Tucko village will be represented well. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Taylor, Trustee Cronin.
Hello, everybody. I hope you're all well. I want to thank every, we had about forty-five volunteers who came out for Tucko Cares Day on September twenty-fifth. We collected trash in thirteen areas throughout the village. It was really great to see so many young people come out, so I want to just thank you all for showing Tucko some love, and a huge thank you to the Environmental and Sustainability Committee, as well as Silvio from D P W, who worked extremely hard for all your hard work, for Trustee Lang, who always brings at least two of his children to everything to help out, Deputy Mayor Howell, the Community Fund of Bronxville, East Chester, and Tucko, and Mayor Andino, everyone pitched in. It was a really great day and a great thing to see. In vain with the, the Tucko Environmental Committee, they met on September twenty-second, and they want to report that food scrapping is, is very much a success, and they want to remind residents that if you haven't already started to food scrap, you can come by and purchase a food scrapping kit and get started as soon as possible. So if that's something that you're interested in, you can always feel free to reach out to me or one of the members of the committee. In that vein, so the Tucko Coddle Girl Scouts, in addition to doing the Hometown Hero banners, which I will not talk about, are, are collecting these plastic bottle tops from all containers. So they will be, when they collect four hundred pounds of plastic bottle tops and caps from various kinds of containers and, and receptacles, they will be able to make a bench out of that, out of that material. And so if they can collect eight hundred, eight hundred pounds, they're going to make two benches. So I am trying to help them with this endeavor, and over the last week, I have started collecting my bottle caps, and it is, it is troubling to see just how many of them accumulate over time. So if you feel so inclined, please start to collect your bottle caps. You can always reach out to me or to Michelle Brish, who's the leader of the Coddle Troop, at coddletroop2642@gmail.com. So the seniors, the Tucko seniors officially start back tomorrow, October fifth. After eighteen months, the time has finally come, and they were, they were able to meet in person. They have been doing a few Bingo days, but tomorrow, they start a full program at nine A M at Father Fata Hall. There will be a bagel breakfast to celebrate. I had a chance on a few occasions to, to sit and do Bingo. Trustee Taylor and Trustee Lang were both there. Trustee Taylor has incredible luck when playing bingo, I will say. So we look forward to a lot of good programming from the seniors. I just want to extend, oh, yeah, so unfortunately, the in-person Cheers to Fifty Gala for the Senior Citizen Council will have to be virtual due to COVID. The Journal and the Ceremony Honoring Fay Blazi, former Tucko Mayor Steve Eklund, Bronxville Police Chief Chris Satriali, and former Bronxville Senior Citizen President Gail McCarthy will be available online October fourteenth, that's next Thursday, and so you can check that out. I want to extend a congratulations to the Knights of Columbus on celebrating their hundred-year gala, and to Shiloh Baptist Church celebrating a hundred and eight years this year, so congratulations.
Thank you, Trustee Cronin. So I'd like to start with a note I got for, from a resident thanking the Police Department and evac. This is a message I got from Steve Celestino, and he says, Dear Madam Mayor and Chief Costanzo, on September twenty-second, I was sitting in my living room watching TV, a normal night ahead of me. At around seven forty-five P M, I started to feel lightheaded, and soon, the room spun out of control. I called my neighbors and asked them to help. They turned, and they in turn called nine one one. Two Tucko Police Officers responded within minutes. Both officers saw the danger I was in, and evac soon entered my home right behind them. The three evac crew members and two police officers got me to Lawrence Hospital for a life-saving shot of T P A, which stopped this stroke that I, I was having. The quick actions of both police officers and the evac crew saved my life. So this is, this is just a testament, just of one, in, one event like this that happens all the time in Tucko, and we have an extraordinary police and evac department, so I'm hoping that Steve Celestino is doing well. Also, the Westchester County Police Reform Steering Committee is having a forum on October twenty-eighth, and they've, they've invited some of the Westchester County municipalities to present what our process was during the Police Reform Committee's time. The chief and I have been invited, and we will be going on October twenty-eighth to present what the process was in Tucko, what recommendations were made here, and what our progress is. So wish us well at that forum. We're going to be serving on a panel. I also want to thank Vito and Sally Pinto, who received the Lifetime Achievement Award at the Bronxville Women's Club. I was honored to present them with a proclamation for their serve, their lifelong service and hearing the stories that were told about all of the lives that they touched. I think it was one of the residents who said, you know, they touched thousands of lives, and that's not an exaggeration. So congratulations to them, and thank you for their Lifetime Achievement Award. So congratulations to them, and thank you for their Lifetime Achievement Award. So we've already mentioned that D P W. Day is on October twenty-fourth. I would also like to add that Bundles of Joy, I don't know how many people are aware of who they are, it's a not-for-profit that's based out of Bronxville, and they provide diapers and formula and period products for families who need them. They're going to be partnering with us at D P W. Day. They will be at Main Street Park distributing diapers and formula and clothing and other items that families who need them would have access to them. So I want to thank Bundles of Joy. Adrian Harper is the founder of Bundles of Joy, so I want to thank them for coming over to Tuckahoe to provide this service. Also, I want to, we've been talking about historic preservation and the Historic Society. A few of us met with the developer. There have been a lot of questions around the ward house to just talk to the developers that purchased the ward house and get an understanding of what their thoughts are, what they wanted to do, what the village's concerns were, and I think it was a very productive meeting. Our attorney was there, our village administrator, and so I think that it gave me a little bit of comfort, comfort to know that the developer was interested in what are the village's concerns, that they could respond in kind, and I think that they came in good faith. So it gives me a positive feeling about moving forward with whatever their project will be. I also want to acknowledge Cancer Awareness Month. As has been stated already, cancer has touched at least one person and probably everybody here in this room, and I just want to make sure that we acknowledge those who have survived it and those who did not survive it. And so my heart and thoughts and prayers are with those people who've been impacted. I certainly have been in my family. So, you know, everyone, we've kind of somewhat removed from Ida, but there are still some families who are, who have been impacted, who are still dealing with insurance policies and trying to get FEMA aid. And one of the things that I'm going to ask you, trustee Taylor, to do is to work with E cap to provide transportation for people who may not be able to understand the application process so readily, to have transportation for them to be able to be taken to the Yonkers or and/or Mamaroneck sites where they do have FEMA assistance there for people to put in their applications. So I think that the village can help those people who are not able to complete those applications and maybe need some help getting to those places where they could get some help. We still have some ways to go with that. And I also wanted to let the residents know that there was a study that I think was started in twenty thirteen or twenty twelve that looked at mitigating flooding in the village. There are specific areas that are impacted whenever there is rain, and flash flooding, as you saw in Hurricane Ida, really impacted us here in Tuckahoe, and so we want to pick up that mantle, and we're going to work with the county to follow up with this study that was started but was not completed, so that we could get some of that work done here in Tuckahoe to be able to mitigate against flooding in the future. And as we can see, the flash floods that they say are every hundred years are happening every five years, and so we want to do some work around that to make sure that we safeguard the residents and the village property. So that will be the, the end of my report, and so at this point, we have a second opportunity to address the board on any items, agenda or not. So anybody have any comments that they'd like to make?
Hello, everyone. I'm sorry.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Adrian Michelle. I'm thirty, I live at thirty-five Washington Street. First, I want to send my congratulations to the Detective Sergeant Santiago and Patrol Sergeant Harris on their new appointment. I really came up here to thank you as a board. I've been a resident here sixteen years, and the work that you guys have been doing has been unmatched and phenomenal. So keep up the great work, and, you know, as we approach election season, I think I probably missed the opportunity to inquire about having the elections moved to be aligned with regular elections time, because you voted on it tonight, so I apologize if I'm not, did I?
No, we just voted on using the community center to hold the elections in March.
Okay.
Yeah, for all, for all districts.
All right, so then I misunderstood.
No, it's okay.
So my inquiry is about, has there been any way that we can potentially have a village vote to see how the residents feel about moving the village board elections to align with the elections of the national level?
Okay, so right now, the board is prioritizing all of the issues, as you said, there's a lot of work to be done, so we're prioritizing all of the things that we want to accomplish, and we'll be certain to keep that in mind during our, you know, prioritizing of the issues that we want to address.
Awesome. Thank you so much, and again, I thank you all, everything that you've been doing around the neighborhood. People are very happy, very satisfied, and you guys are the talk of the town. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the board on any agenda items or non-agenda
Sal Provenzano from Eleven River Street. I'm going to talk about two separate things. First of all, trustee Cronin, thank you for your kind words about the Kyo Council, the Knights of Columbus. You were there at our celebration. You gave some beautiful, warm words, and I know that you were disappointed as a child that it wasn't the Knights of the Round Table. There was no jousting or anything like that.
No jousting, no knights?
Right, it was great, very warm, and trustee Lang, thank you for your support as well with our council. I'm going to switch gears, and I'm going to talk about something that mayor, deputy mayor Howell and trustee Lang had talked about, that's the Ward House. I just want to give an official announcement that we have started a five oh one C three corporation. It's called Friends of the Ward House, Inc., and you're going to get a preview of a message that we're going to be sending out very soon. So it goes like this. At the top of a hill where two prominent roads dating back to colonial times intersect is the site upon which one of Westchester's most historic houses rests. If any structures in Westchester preserve the story of the creation of our nation, as does the Ward House, its history recalls the armed conflict, civilian suffering, and political divisions in the county during the American Revolution. Samuel Crawford, Westchester's most important patriot leader to die in the service of our country, was mortally wounded in a skirmish here. The house is in Tuckahoe, White Plains Road, where Bronxville, Tuckahoe, and Eastchester meet. It is one of fewer than a dozen early farmhouses on the post road between Mount Vernon and White Plains, which have survived to teach us about our local past. The Ward House was burnt by the British in seventeen seventy-eight and was rebuilt in the seventeen nineties. We must not let it be destroyed again. The Ward House, scrolled up a little, the Ward House is at the heart of our three communities, Eastchester, Bronxville, and Tuckahoe. Let us join together to save it. The Friends of the Ward House is a five oh one C three not-for-profit corporation, and please support us in our mission, and I'll read you the actual mission of the Friends of the Ward House. Mission of the Friends of the Ward House is to serve as a charitable organization, to conduct activities to preserve, maintain, and generally promote for the public good the historical integrity of the Ward House and its associated grounds, and to advance education related to the same. So if anybody is interested in helping us out, we are accepting donations. We have a post office box right here in Tuckahoe, post office box sixty-two, and would love it if anybody's interested, we're going to be reaching out for public donations, private donations, grants. We're going to be looking where the money is. We're very passionate about this house not being destroyed again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm very happy to be here, and I have to say that the proceedings tonight have tempered much of what I was coming to address this board about, because the last meeting of this board and the decorum, all right, decorum is a compliment of the participants there, left me embarrassed and upset. But I'm not going to dwell on that now, because tonight shows who we are and what we can be here in Tuckahoe. But I do want to offer some advice to business, businesses in Tuckahoe or any place that serve the public. When you serve the public and you're open to the public, then you have no right to impose on them what is your personal political preference. You can do that in your home, in your car, on your body, but not when you are serving the public. I have no problem with anyone being Republican, Democrat, Conservative, what, anything. That's what America's about. First place, and let me stick this in what I'm thinking about, is we need to start teaching civics again, because I think we lost our minds out here with the way people are responding. No business is to tell, and anyone on, anyone who tells businesses, it's okay for you to decide that only Democrats are welcome in your business, or Republicans, or anything else, is wrong. It's just morally, and it's morally ignorant. I mean, it just makes no sense if that's what you want to be. Anyone who proposes or encourages businesspeople to do that, the person who was the center of what happened the last meeting, I think was ill-advised. It was about a V post of a post that denigrated handicapped, L G B T., and what was the other, and the people, the men in blue, the Capitol Police. And there was a, I hate to use the word, but to me, a mob of people that did not represent who we are, who we are here tonight in Tuckahoe. And by the way, I found out that many of them were not from Tuckahoe. Keep your stuff wherever you are. Don't bring it to us. I really did not like it. I was, when I went home, I was shaking, and anyone, anyone here, there, who advocates for that ought to be ashamed of yourselves. That's not who we are. Tuckahoe, I'm Miss Diversity, you can call it whatever it is. I am proud of this little jewel here that has a serious representation of who we are as a nation. I think that no one needs to, I'd rather you put no signs up for anyone. I know places here, places I go and hang out, where they don't put anyone's signs up. That's good. But to determine that you're just going to put some up and to be encouraged by anyone, whether you want political office or not, is disgraceful. It's embarrassing. I am so relieved with the dignity and the respect and the camaraderie and the sense of community that's in this room tonight. I am humiliated and embarrassed, and I feel degraded by what happened last week, and I hope to God it never happens again.
Ms. Lovely, may I ask you to just state your name and address? Please state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you knew. My name is Lovely Phillips. I'm twenty South High Street, Tuckahoe, New York. Proud to say that my grandparents bought the house I live in now in nineteen thirty-six.
Thank you.
And the taxes, I just found it, was six thousand, I mean, they paid six thousand eight hundred dollars for it.
Okay, thank you.
All that's good.
Anyone else? Anyone else that would like to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Nancy Hytner Day. I live at Four Consulate Drive. I wanted to just take this opportunity to thank you, mayor Andino, trustee Howell, trustee Taylor, and trustee Cronin, for helping Tuckahoe get through the pandemic by arranging and executing an excellent vaccination drive. Mayor Andino, while you were still a trustee, you took it upon yourself to arrange for vaccinations for residents here in Tuckahoe. I got vaccinated here, as did many of my neighbors. Trustee Howell, you used your scientific background to help us understand the coronavirus by hosting webinars, because I got in arguments with people, and I was like, well, no, that's not right, because I saw this on the thing, and blah, blah, blah. Trustee Taylor and trustee Cronin, both of you were not even elected, but you were picking up people, calling people, and you were at the community center helping people. So I just wanted to thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the board? And I just want to remind everyone to please keep their comments to three minutes.
Hi, Mike Dardano, sixty-two Chestnut Street. I'll be real fast. I want to thank everyone for acknowledging breast cancer. My wife's a survivor, and I was on a walk yesterday for Support Connection, and we had about three hundred, four hundred people, usually there's two thousand, but people came out, so that was great. Second thing is, I don't want to forget Italian American Heritage Month. I know there's in the news, there's controversy about, you know, someone like Columbus. To me, Columbus doesn't mean much. What means much is my grandparents, who came here from Calabria. They came from the Village of Albee, and they came here with nothing, and they struggled, and they raised families, and they were successful, and that, to me, is what Italian American Heritage Month is about, so I want to acknowledge them. I know there's a lot of Italians here, so I want to acknowledge that. I appreciate that. Kara, thank you for the Tuckahoe Cares. Tony, Anthony and I walked around Marble Dale. We cleaned up a lot of crap, so a lot of people came by and actually thanked us for doing what we did, and that was very nice, and I hope that we can do that more, and I hope everyone here, please don't throw your trash on the ground because into the river. And then finally, doctor, you may not like this, but Danny, if you're getting nervous at bingo, Peak Skill and Austining are going to have legal weed. So if you want, I'll take an Uber, and I'll get you half a gummy, and then you won't be stressed out. Thank you.
I might take you up on that.
Okay, this meeting is...
Anthony Fury's written the place. Everyone, don't forget this weekend is a Columbus Day carnival over at Lake Isle.
That's right.
And the parade is, starting the parade, three o'clock on Sunday, starts at I C S. And another one, Knights of Columbus, November sixth is our pasta night.
Oh.
The flyers just came out today, so I'll give one to the Phillips Clark, so you can put it on TV. I think it's twenty, twenty-five dollars. If any merchants want to donate something for a raffle, feel free, we're going to go around, see what we could get, but November sixth, keep that on the calendar. So it'll be I C S Cafeteria, about five o'clock, I think it is. It just came out today, so I'll give her the flyer, put it on TV.
That's good. Thank you, Tony. Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board?
Claire Gorman, twenty-four Bronx Street, First South. Thank you for taking on the efforts to save the Ward House. It really is so important, and Jeff doesn't know it, but we will be giving. And secondly, I also want to give a shout out myself personally to Charlotte Stubble and John Palladino. Both have served this community so well for so many years, and they deserve a huge round of applause. They're terrific.
Okay, we are rounding out, it's eight thirty. Anybody else would like to address the board on any issues, any items? Sure, come on up. Sure? Come on up. It's okay. Just state your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fazila Mariani, and I live in Tuckahoe, on 3 West Drew Avenue. And I just want to say I'm against marijuana, and I hope you guys think of our children and the community here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And anyone else would like to address the board?
Christie Giorgio, 50, Columbus Avenue. I want to thank the board for at least having a discussion about the marijuana thing, instead of just quickly just saying no to it. I have strong suspicions that you all will say no to it, and that's fine, and opting out. But I do think the important part of all this is we are having open government again. And whether we agree with a topic or don't agree with the topic, it's worth having a discussion over the topic and having an education on it. Like, I don't know if the people of Eastchester or Bronxville would have known specifically, and I haven't seen the meetings. In fact, Eastchester had difficulties even showing meetings previously, so we won't even get into that. But I don't even think the citizens knew that you had to either opt in or opt out. This is a new law, and there was the wisdom of the New York State Legislature to pass the law, and it gave the municipalities the opportunity to either opt into the law and have shops or not have shops here. I also want to say something about, I'm sorry, I'm going to pick on a business that's in Eastchester, not in Tuckahoe. I have a problem with Eastchester Tobacco. They have on their window, big as day, glass pipes. Now, maybe I'm ignorant, but if somebody is buying a glass pipe, I think they're probably using it for crystal meth. I may be wrong about that, but that's my guess. I have, you know, I don't know. I think having something on a window like that, that gets me a little concerned. I want Eastchester Tobacco to survive. I want them to thrive. I want them to have their, sell their cigarettes, whatever they want to do. That's fine. But if we have that concern about having a marijuana shop, okay, I wonder what we're doing with having something that's a little bit more to me, maybe not as, what's the word I want to say, overt, but is something that is there, out there in the public?
If I may?
Go ahead.
Don't you think that if we decided to opt in and ultimately we had dispensaries in town, don't you think that it's only a matter of time before you drive down the block and you see that exact store that you don't want to see?
Well, that's exactly what I'm saying. And what I'm saying is, if we are, if we have something that's quote "legal", like a glass pipe thing that's there, you know, I think there should be, what's the word I want to say? I think it's not, I think already we have something that's legal that is, I think, personally for me, crossing the line. Okay, and that's quote "a legal shop". I also want to just say, like I said, I was supportive in the sense of at least having the conversation. I did, I did say last meeting, and I'll say this time this meeting, I'm not necessarily against it, but I will say this, if it's a situation where we want to have caution and we want to opt out right now for us to figure out what's going on, I'm all in favor of that, in the sense of it's better to be cautious about it and opt out than to opt in and we're stuck. So if that, but I don't think people in other municipalities that did not even have a discussion about it, I don't think that's good. I think we should have discussions about it. And like I said, I wish nothing but the best for Eastchester Tobacco. I want them to do that, to survive. But like I said, these are the types of things that are legal, and we see it big as day in that Bill of Rights Plaza there.
Thank you. Thank you. Any, anybody else? If we have no one else that would like to address the board, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. I may have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move.
And we will see you all on November 8th at 7:00 PM, next board meeting. Good night, Tuckahoe.